Well, good morning, everybody. Happy Friday. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, we are hereby opening the meeting to be held here at the Ralph H. Walton Justice Center. It is 9:00 a.m., and we are going to begin this meeting with an invocation by Pastor Mike McMahon.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we've received your power, your ability, your efficiency and might because the Holy Spirit has come on us. We're witnesses in Hood County to the ends of the earth. We fearlessly and confidently and boldly draw near to the throne of grace that we may receive mercy and find grace to help in good times for every need, appropriate help, well-timed help, coming just when we in Hood County need it. Father, thank you for sending forth your commandments to the earth. Your word runs swiftly throughout Hood County. Your word continues to grow and spread. And Father, we seek, we request, we ask for the peace and the welfare of Hood County in which you've caused us to live. We pray to you for the welfare of this county and do our part by getting involved in it. We will not let false prophets and diviners who are in our midst deceive us. We pay no attention and attach no significance to our dreams or to theirs. Destroy their schemes, Lord. Confuse their tongues, for we've seen violence and strife. Holy Spirit, we ask you to visit our county and open the eyes of the people so they may turn from darkness to light, from the power of the devil so they may receive forgiveness and release from their sins, and a place and portion among those who are consecrated and purified by faith in Jesus. We pray for deliverance and salvation for those who are following the course and fashion of the world, who are under the sway of the tendency of this present age, following the prince of power of the air. Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do. We speak to the prince of the power of the air, to the God of this world who binds the unbeliever's minds so that they can't discern the truth, and we command that he leave the heavens above our county. Thank you, Father, for the guardian angels assigned to this place who war for us in the heavenlies. In the name of Jesus, we stand victorious over the principalities, powers, rulers of darkness of this world and the spiritual wickedness in high places over Hood County. We ask the Holy Spirit to sweep through the gates of our county and convince the people and bring demonstration to them about sin and about righteousness, the uprightness of heart and right standing with God, and about judgment. Father, you said, "For I know the thoughts and plans that I have for you," thoughts and plans for welfare and peace and not for evil to give you hope in your final outcome. By the blessing of the influence of the upright and God's favor because of the upright, Hood County is exalted. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
So we have no special presentations, so we've got service awards next. Mr. Donald Cleveland, for five years. Okay, our head of development, Mr. Clint Head, five years. Okay, Mr. Clint Head, five years of service to Hood County, and we have a little talking over this county's esteem.
Some of you might recognize him from doing maintenance here in the past, but he wanted to step up his game and became a deputy.
All right.
Very proud.
Excellent. Next on the list is Michael Salgado.
He's on vacation. He's my IT guy, and the next one...
Jose Lopez for 10 years.
Yeah, and I think he's, I don't remember if he's on vacation or where he is, so I don't know.
Well, congratulations to both of them. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments at large, and I do not see that we've got any. Okay. Daniel J. Bennett.
Are you interim judge today?
Sir.
Are you interim judge?
I'm Judge Pro Tim.
All right. Judge Pro Tim, commissioners, good morning. My name is Daniel Bennett. I live in White Settlement, Texas, Tarrant County. Now, we'll talk about line items and shifting of money. Back in June of 2020, Mr. Law, who was the head of the appraisal district in Tarrant County, said that he can move money between line items. And I made a point to the new board that year, that money's going to be shifted between line items. It needs to be put onto the agenda and let us know that money is being shifted. I mean, if your money, if your budget is set and your funds are obligated and you have a deficiency over here, I totally agree, through accounting methods, you can account for that. But that's not really transparent to the public. So I was watching the Granbury City Council meeting the other night, and once again, Mr. Law stated he can move money between line items, and it's common practice. Well, today... Excuse me, I was rude. I didn't bring this up here, and I'm not familiar with your numerical system of your agendas. Today, in line item transfer budget amendments or obligated funds or excess, whatever you want vernacular you like to use, because I know they dance around in the appraisal system with that verbiage. Today, capital projects, you're doing a $200,000 small increase for equipment and an $800,000 increase for capital layout. That's wonderful. Thank you for being transparent. Perhaps your Hood County Appraisal District should be doing the same thing. Now, I did a little digging at their last meeting. They had funds, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 funds that they transferred $95,000 around. So they took $95,000 out of these funds and put them into these funds. It would have been nice if they had listed that in their agenda or their agenda packet so that people can see it online. This has always been one of my core issues at the appraisal district in Tarrant County. We can't always rely on our auditors to do their job and say that all line items were accounted for and annotated. So I'm just suggesting that in the future, it may quell any fear, uncertainty, is a much better word. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes the open comments, citizens at large. We are now at item number Roman numeral seven, miscellaneous business to be discussed. Number one, discuss and consider approving roof upgrades to the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center, not to exceed $120,000. Funding for the project will be paid out of Fund 55. Mr. Jay Riley.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. Commissioners.
It's just been a year, so that's okay.
We talked about this last time. Basically, the roof is 17 years old. Just to recap, we're losing a lot of the granules on the roof, and we're starting to have problems. If we do this project, it will give us 10 more years on this roof. And basically, what it is, it's a Teflon-type coating. It'll replace, we're not going to rip nothing off, we're not doing anything. We may make a few repairs, but we're not going to rip the roof off, and we'll add this to it. It'll give us another 10 years. It'll give us two years workmanship.
Well, this, and this will include the non-roof items, but the flanging and, you know, the things that we talked about that last court with the insurance claim.
This does not include that.
So we got to throw that in, too?
We have to throw that in, too.
Didn't we approve that last court?
You did approve that last time.
Okay.
You did. So this'll give us a little bit, it'll give us 10 more years, and I think it's well warranted. It'll also, Ben, it's a lighter color and everything, and it's only for the flat roof. The metal roofs are fine. Just, I'd like to get that on the record, that we're fine on the metal roof.
Any other commissioners have a comment?
I think this is, yeah, I mean, it's a relatively inexpensive extension to the life of the roof. I think it's a very responsible thing to do.
I think it's a good, good move.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the roof upgrades to the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center, not to exceed $120,000 from Fund 55.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Motion to consider approving roof upgrades to the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center, not to exceed $120,000, funding to come out of Fund 55. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
I think your county clerk was hovering, waiting to hear who the second was on that because there were two at the, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I need all the help I can get.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number two, consider and take appropriate action to promote a data specialist I at $38,800 to clerical supervisor I at $45,500 effective Monday, December 18, 2023. Ms. Ferguson.
Yes. I'd like to do, if I could, since I have to do all of them at the same time, two, three, and four.
Okay, we're going to, that's a good idea, so we're going to, I'm going to read the other two. Item, this is, I just read item number two. Item number three, consider and take appropriate action to promote a data specialist I, $38,800 to office manager O M dash 2, $41,000, effective Monday, December 18, 2023. And number four, consider and take appropriate action to promote title clerk I at currently $36,600 to data specialist D S I to $38,800 to be effective Monday, December 18, 2023.
Yes. It's not listed in there. She was...
You're my cone?
Yes. She's a bookkeeper, but it's labeled as a title clerk, but she was actually my bookkeeper.
Right, she's a data specialist, right?
Yes, but she's actually listed as a bookkeeper, being promoted to chief deputy, which would be clerical supervisor. I think I got all the terminology right. She's over there, she's saying yes.
Yeah. Yeah, basically, your clerical supervisor left, your office manager left, you're making promotions to fill those positions from within, so...
Yes, and so they're all just being moved up one step, each one of them. I'm not doing my bookkeeper yet. I'm going to wait until the first of the year to do that one. I'm doing that job right now. So I just want to hold off on that. That's a little bit different when it comes to working with the auditor and the money and where it goes, so I'm holding off on that one. So...
Anybody else have questions or comments? And we're doing this midstream because you've had a couple of people leave.
Yeah, appraisal district got them.
Okay.
As we go forward with, you know, we just implemented a new policy called Manager Compensation Guidelines, and I'll just read it. It says, "New hires promotion transfers to the vacated salary above starting pay or step one will be considered if the individual being hired, promoted, transferred possesses the following: unique, relevant experience in the field for which they are applying for, or provides significant cost savings and/or efficiency to the county by promoting or placing current staff in the approved positions."
Yes, and I didn't ask for them to be paid any higher. They're all at entry level.
Okay, so do you have, so you're saying you're not ask, so it's not going above starting pay or step one?
No, they're all at entry level.
Except for the office manager. She's at step two.
Yes, but...
With the savings of $1,000...
Okay, so, I think when we discussed this, when we approved this policy, we were expecting the supervisor to provide, well, I asked that in court, and the answer was yes, that the supervisor would be providing to the court the background for this. And I did see the, you know, the attachments, which were not from you, they were from the applicants for the transfer, so...
They were supposed to be from me. I didn't know that.
Okay, so, can you speak to that, how this is, with the unique, relevant experience or providing significant cost savings on each of these?
Well, they're not starting out at the pay that the people have left. She's starting at level one, not at the pay that the other one left at.
Okay.
That's a $5,000 difference.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a change of job duties is what's going on. It's, she's got a vacancy as a clerical supervisor, so it's promoting to that, and that's on step one.
I think just setting the precedent, this is the first one that we've done since the new policy, just to reiterate that a concise document from the supervisor that outlines exactly what Commissioner Wilson, I'm sorry, Commissioner Andrews, and you are staying so that we could see before court, like, exactly how much is being saved, what you think the, what you think the unique experience is versus posting the job outside and finding someone, you know, just speak to that as, you know...
I wouldn't post this job outside. We promote within. That's what the county O has always done, nine years' experience from her.
And I've done every job with the tax assessor except for hers.
Yes, so that's what I'm saying, is just write that up so that we would see that before court and understand exactly what you're doing and what the cost saving is per the policy.
Hopefully, she won't leave and go to appraisal.
No, I'm not saying to do it. I'm just saying in the future, since this is the first one that we've had since the new policy, that, just as setting a precedent, that that would be a good thing to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Any other commissioners have any other comments? Probably be good to just take this one motion at a time, so anybody want to?
Oh, I was ready to do all three of them.
Okay, well, then do that.
Thank you, Captain. Andrews, sorry.
That's all right. I move that we promote data specialist I to clerical supervisor I at $45,500, promote data specialist I at $38,800 to office manager II, $41,000, and promote title clerk I to data specialist I at $38,800, all of that effective Monday, 18, 2023.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Andrews' motion?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against it? So four ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now at item number five. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the resolution rejecting the Hood County Appraisal District's resolution to create several committed fund balance accounts by retaining excess taxpayer funds from the 2023 fiscal year budget and to instruct Hood County Appraisal District to return the funds to the taxing entities either by credit against the 2024 assessment or by refund. Commissioner Samuelson.
Are there any speakers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there are, actually, quite a few. First speaker is Mr. Eddie Rodriguez.
Love the shirt, by the way. They kind of go with Clint's socks. That's a...
Very festive.
I appreciate it. Let me get myself set up here. All right, I'm ready. Good morning, Commissioner Samuelson, Andrews Wilson, and Mr. Eagle. My name is Eddie Rodriguez. I'm here before you as a member of the Board of Directors for the Hood Central Appraisal District. I'm here to provide information about Agenda Item Five in relationship with Hood Central Appraisal District's resolution to create three committed funds, the technology fund, litigation fund, the building maintenance fund. I want to provide you with information to consider before making a decision. These type of funds are similar to the same types of funds that are set up by the school district, the city, and the county, a process used by auditors to improve its annual reporting and accounting standards in coordination with the general accepted accounting principles established by the government accounting standard boards. And with the advice of the HCAT auditing firms and the HCAT, the HCAT was given guidance that this was the best way to establish these line items. Currently, the county has 53 departments, 44 different types of funds, some of which have the same type of committed funds in them. And we'll start with Fund 010, which is your main fund. In general administration, you've got two line items that have contingency for murder trial, which is at $75,000, a contingency for general fund, which is $230,000. Your county court at law has a line item of expert testimony of $1,000. Your district court has a line item of expert testimony of $1,800. Indigent defense attorney fees have multiple line items, have an expert witness at $500, line item of other litigations at $1,500. The district judge has an expert witness account of $5,000. District judge has other litigations, felony appeals of $25,000. County attorney has a line item of witness testimony. Also, the district attorney has a line item for expert testimony. Your building maintenance department has a combined budget. Just keep in mind that we don't have departments, we're just the Hood County Appraisal District, so any type of maintenance done or technology upgrades comes out of our general fund. Building maintenance department for the county has a combined budget for the 2024 of $1,556,195. Also included in this department is a line item for building maintenance of $125,000 or $125,000. Your technologies department has a combined budget of $3,157,371. Moving to the different type of funds, the county has Fund 55, which is your capital projects, that has a combined budget of $2,815,000. Your Fund 109, state education donation...
Point of order, I don't see how this is relevant to the HCAT...
I agree with you. I was just going to let him go on, but, well, we need to make sure we get the timer going, too.
The timer's still going.
Oh, is it? Okay.
I don't see how going over the Hood County budget is relevant to the resolution for the Hood County...
I agree. Please move on, Mr. Rodriguez.
All right. The county has 53 departments, 44 different types of funds that is...
Again, point of order.
Same point of order, Mr. Rodriguez. Get to the agenda item, please.
This is all examples of auditing process that is used by your own auditing department. The only thing HCAT is trying to do is follow the same process recommended by the HCAT auditors to improve our own annual reporting and our own accounting standards. Thank you very much for your time. That is all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Ron, Mr. Ron Sutton.
Good morning, Judge Pro Tim and commissioners. Good to see you again. The reason for my speaking this morning is to respectfully ask that you withdraw your opposition to the action taken at the December 14 meeting of the Hood County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. We voted to establish three committed fund accounts, all very important. The total that we committed to the accounts, $120,050 for legal, 40 for technology, and 20 for maintenance. We consider it good business to do that, and we're acting on the experience of our chief appraiser and good business practice, and I would think that the board here, commissioners, would take similar action if you were in our shoes. This board and our chief appraiser is committed to operating under all the rules, laws, and regulations established for central appraisal districts. And you know, we've had some challenges to overcome from past actions of this board, but working in unison with the county commissioners, county judge, and other taxing entities, we've made great progress. I believe that this is another step in conducting business as good stewards for the taxpayers. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Daniel J. Bennett.
Daniel J. Bennett, E T C. You're welcome, sir. I'm sorry, Pro Tim judge, he asked me about my name. I just want to make sure you got it spelled correctly. Let's talk about this. I've read through this. I've read the Attorney General's opinion. I watched the Granbury meeting for the city council where the resolution was withdrawn. But I believe it was withdrawn for the wrong reasons. I know Mr. Rodriguez is on that city council. Doesn't take away my feelings because, and this is why I like to state that I believe this resolution should be passed today. There's a process within the property tax code for notification to the taxing entities by the chief appraiser, any material change to anybody's budget, especially after September 15. They could augment that budget to June 15 and September 15. You still have to approve it. They have to send you a document saying, "We're changing this," because you may have already passed it by your body. So then you have to approve or disapprove. So this change comes in December. Well, I want to know where your notification was. Now, I know Mr. Law's habits, lack of a better word. I would think that you didn't get notification in a timely fashion. Now, I want to read this to you. 606C, the board, being your central appraisal district, may amend the approved budget at any time. They could do it on, they could do it on Christmas Day if they want. But the secretary of the board, whom I do not know who that is, must deliver a written copy of the proposed amendment to the presiding officer of the governing body of each taxing unit participating in the district, not later than 30 days before the board acts. So if they acted on the 14th, you needed to get it sometime in November. So you need to look for that notification. Because, because we're talking about the process here, you're talking about, you guys have so many issues. This is such, this is such a pinnacle moment for y'all, to say the process matters. So Mr. Pete Smith, who represents the appraisal district, he's out of Dallas. I know some attorneys know him. He represents several appraisal districts. And Mr. Law himself said, "The actions taken by the board, they were prudent, responsible," this is at the Granbury City Council meeting, "they were prudent, responsible, and they were approved by our legal council." "They were prudent, responsible, and they were approved by our legal council and our auditing firms." Well, maybe Mr. Smith was assuming that there was proper notification, because the process itself is not bad. It's the process of amending the budget is what, is at the core issue. So what hap, what needs to happen is needs to be rejected and make the appraisal district do what's responsible under the property tax code. Now, that's just my opinion. I would get a legal opinion. It's basically it in itself, but I could read from the Attorney General's opinion, but I summed it up fairly well. And I would guide you to 610 and read for the public. It's, "The appraisal district's participating taxing units may utilize Section 6.10 of the Tax Code to disapprove the amendment of the budget by an appraisal district board." And within there, you'll find the time frame for which notification's required. And I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you mind citing that AG opinion if you did? It got by me.
I don't have the front page, sir. I think it's 1040. I think it's Greg Abbott, 1040. It was, it was introduced at the Granberry City Council meeting. I believe it's Greg Abbott, 1040, but I only have the last page.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That is the one that was presented at the.
GA 1040?
At the City Council meeting.
I didn't stay for it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next speaker is Mr. Rick Frye.
Good morning, Judge Protem and Commissioners. Merry Christmas, sir. It's, what we established to do is create three funds. These three funds are, are from funds we did not spend in the '23 budget year. Our budget year goes from January to December 31st. It would be really hard for us to declare that we had excess until you get to the month of December, because you don't know what's going to happen. So, you know, just, just for clarification. The, the funds are dedicated. They're capped. We can't put anything else. They can't be used for anything else. The IT fund, one of the things that comes up is that we went out for bids to do re-cabling in our building. Well, the contractor can't do it till January. Well, we can't spend, we can't, we can't move a balance forward like y'all can. So that, that was actually budgeted in the '23 budget, but we can't carry it over into '24. So by creating this IT fund of $40,000, we'll be able to pay that bill out of that fund. Building, we all know the history about the building and the process that went through and, and that we're not building a new building. The building is old. It has some problems. We address those as they come up, and the $20,000 is basically for us a contingency, because if we lose an air conditioner or we lose other things, we just need the money to fix it. And we don't, we don't want to have to come to you and say, "We need to amend the budget and it takes three or four weeks," especially if we have something that's a critical factor in our building. The litigation fund, it's pretty self-explanatory. Because of the acceleration in values of our property, our property values went way up. We had a lot of people protest. A lot of people want to, want to go litigate. We have to defend those values. If it's a commercial property, you have to get experts, and they come in, and you know, if you hire an expert, it costs a lot of money. This happened in '23, but the litigation probably won't come forward to '24. So this is just a fund to help us if we have to go to court and we have to hire experts or have court costs in the '24 budget year, that things happen in '23. It's not raising what your contributions are. That money is already there. They're committed. They're capped. We think it's good business to be able to have this in reserve so that if these things come up, we can act on them. We try to be transparent. There's, there's a lot of things that happened in the past that we're trying to mitigate and move forward in a positive manner so that we're forthright, we're open, we're honest. We want to make sure that we provide the very best service we possibly can for the citizens and the entities we represent, and we just think this is a good business decision, and that's why we're here. So thank you very much.
Can I ask you a couple, Mr. Frye? Do you, I might ask you a couple of questions. I don't know, I may be putting you on the spot. Surely not my intention to do so, but.
I don't want to be on the spot. Go ahead.
On the IT situation that you've got there, that this was, it was budgeted in '23, it never, they weren't able to get to it, so it came back around in '24, but when you did the budget, you anticipated that this expenditure was going to happen in '23. How much was that?
I don't have the figure off the top of my head. It was, I think it was almost $17.5. That's kind of where, there were some amendments, because we upgraded to a 6A cable, which is the latest and greatest, and it was about a $3,000 amendment so that we were on par with the latest technology. Because when it was bid, 6 was out, but 6A was being considered, now 6A, so there was an amendment, but I believe it's between $17,000 and $18,000.
Okay, so 20-ish. You know, honestly, I'm struggling with this. One, it feels like all of this should absolutely be done during the budget cycle, that, that you go in and say, "Hey, these are expenditures that," you know, the building fund, to have some money in there, I can completely understand why you don't want to have to go to every taxing entity whenever you need to replace an air conditioner. There needs to be some funds in there set aside for that and budgeted every year and say, "Hey, let's put $20,000 over here if, if we don't spend it," or, you know, whatever that number is. I'm just using the 20 because that's what's here. "If we don't spend that, we'll still request it in the next budget cycle." And, and, and so it, it ends up being just a part of the budget. My, my, really, my only issue with what we're doing here is the timing of it. Instead of that being in the budget and a budgeted item and say, "Hey, let's, let's anticipate these things." Now, with the, with the IT situation there, that was a little bit different, because it wasn't, you know, and I'm, I can see how that kind of puts you in a pickle, where you're expecting to pay for this in '23, and it didn't happen. The litigation, I think that that's the potential with, with property values accelerating like they are right now, or like they have been over the last couple of years. I could definitely see how that would be a situation. But again, isn't that something that we should go back to the budget and say, "Let's create a fund at this point in the budget process?"
To answer your question, you're, you're right. We don't, we don't have the leeway like you do in most of the entities to be able to carry a balance forward.
Right.
Or issue a purchase order that ties those funds in this budget into the next budget. We, the way we're audited, we can't do that. So that's one of the reasons. If you remember during the budget cycle, we presented a budget. Y'all told us, "Go sharpen our pencil." So the budget we created is very austere. It's very bare bones. We didn't anticipate in the, in the litigation, we didn't anticipate the number. We looked at older numbers, like this is what we used last year and a year before. This is the trend. But then we had a lot more cases filed than we ever anticipated, and some of those are being settled and hopefully, and again, this is a capped, dedicated fund. If we don't use it, then it's, it's going to be reflected in next year's budget that, you know, the entities will have less to pay. So for us, it's a proactive thing, because we're really trying to sew up some, some holes that have been created by circumstance. The building, you know, we anticipated possibly that we were going to build a new building, and there were some, some things we put off that weren't brought forward. Things like, you know, our restrooms are not ADA compliant. You know, we need to look at maybe refixturing and doing some repair in those. So we're trying to be proactive and make sure that our money is spent openly and wisely, but we don't feel like that it's, it's incumbent on y'all or us and the entities that every time something comes up in these three areas that we have to come back and say, "Ah." Because it's going to be a three or four week process, and some of these things may not be three or four weeks that we can, they're time sensitive.
And I, and I, and I see your point there. It's absolutely valid point, and I don't think, I don't have any issue whatsoever with these funds existing. That's, you know, that's, that's not the question. It just seems to me that this needs to be part of the budget process, and that's where my.
Let me point out one thing. Your, your budget is, you start in March and April, and you have budget hearings and budget workshops, and you approve the budget in late August or the 1st of September. It goes into effect in October the 1st. Ours is created, has to be approved in June, and then it goes into effect in the January. So that three months makes a big difference, because.
June? Did you mean September or August? You said June, because the budget was approved August 31st.
Your budget or?
No, yours.
No, I don't think so, but I may be wrong. Point I don't know about. But anyway, we can't, once our budget is presented, we don't amend ours unless you say, "Go back to the drawing board," which we did this year. But, so we have a longer lead time, and in the case of the property valuations in the market value acceleration and the protest, we couldn't anticipate that.
Right, right.
So I can, okay. Any questions?
I will probably have questions, too, but I didn't know if anyone else was, okay.
We got one more speaker?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Last speaker on item number five is Mr. David Ferris.
Good morning. I think I know every one of you. Obviously, I live here in Granberry. First, let's get to the point of these funds. I have absolutely no problem if they create new funds. The question is using the money from 2023 in 2024, all right? I know that one of the gentlemen was talking about how the appraisal district needed a, you know, the money for, what was the term? Contingencies, okay? So let's take some 2023 excess money for contingencies. How about giving it back to the taxpayers for their contingencies and paying tax bills? It was also mentioned about the huge rate of increase in appraisals, and apparently the huge rate of increase in litigation that they're expecting. Doesn't that kind of ring a bell? My wife was in the tax office just this last week to pay our taxes, which have gone up 40% to 50% over the last two years. And there was a woman in front of her that was paying her taxes, and she was just distraught, probably is the best way. It's like, wait a minute. I thought Hood County lowered my taxes, but my tax rates, my taxes have almost doubled. And the clerk was talking, you know, was saying, was kind of giving some answer. My wife decided to speak up and said, "Well, yeah, sure, they lowered the tax rate, but your appraisals on your home doubled." So they give you 3% or 5%, you know, some pittance on the rate, but when your appraisal valuation goes up immensely, I mean, it's killing the taxpayers, okay? I, there was an opinion from a CPA that somewhere in the governmental accounting, and I haven't been able to find it, I would challenge you to check with an auditor of governmental accounting. My wife is not a governmental CPA, but she seems to remember it, that it is not really, well, I don't know if I'll use the word illegal, but it's, she doesn't think it's proper for local governments to maintain or to hold money from a previous year, invest it, and keep it as a surplus. That governmental accounting, the principle is, this is what you got for this year, you use it. If you don't use it, you give it back. And I challenge you to ask an auditor on governmental accounting, all right? The last thing, taxes are just too high. I started looking at some of the numbers of taxes in Hood County and all counties across the state. I haven't got all of the data yet. I really, as you know, some of you, I really like to do math. I don't have the data yet, but one thing stood out as a huge red flag, looking at all the counties in Texas. Hood County, 62,000 people, roughly right about the bottom 20% in population. In looking down at the median taxes paid by county, Hood County is about at the 13th, top 13th percentile top taxes paid. I really don't think the home values in Hood County would rank up at the top 13 when you look at South Lake, Plano, all of the big, I, I don't see the houses here in Granberry that I used to see when I lived in South Lake, all right? Yes?
Time's up. Thank you.
I was finished. Thank you.
Good timing. Okay, that, I don't, I do not see any other speaker slips here, so.
Okay.
So I'll send this item now back over to Commissioner Samuelson.
Thank you, Commissioner Eagle. So first, I want to comment on a couple of the things that were mentioned, that the line items that the county has as contingency were approved during the budget cycle. And then, the, what was approved in the HCAD budget cycle, there is a contingency of $110,000, including the contingency and then the capital outlay. There is $110,000 in contingency that was already included in the HCAD budget. So I'm just going back to why I put this on the agenda. I was at the HCAD meeting on the 14th, and I, and then I did, was able to watch the City Council meeting on Tuesday. And so if I can recap for those who may not have been able to attend or follow what all the speakers said, what is happening is the HCAD board is taking a portion of the excess uncommitted funds from the 2023 budget and creating three new committed funds, technology, building maintenance, and litigation for a total of amount of about $105,000. Is that correct? $120,000. Okay. And these funds will be available to be used in the 2024 fiscal year. Is that correct with Eddie or one of the HCAD folks could? Could, could one of you?
Commissioner, the funds would be committed as designated, and they would stay in effect if not used. These would not be in the budget, but these would be separate funds that would be accounted for during the audit of the budget.
But they would be, these are funds that would be available in the 2024 fiscal year.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So we did receive a letter on December 11th from the chief appraiser stating that there would be an agenda item to consider establishing these funds. However, there was a mistake in that letter. It said the meeting would be on Friday, December 14th. It should have said Thursday. I don't know who was that letter originated from, the board that asked the chief appraiser? The board asked the chief appraiser to send that? Or was that the chief appraisers initiated the sending of that letter? Do either, any of the folks here from HCAD know?
Commissioner Samuelson, I think that was a, a letter that was sent out to all the entities by the chief appraiser. I think it was just an honest mistake. You know, a habit that he has from his previous appraisal district had meetings on Fridays. So it was just an honest mistake, probably on his part.
To send it on December 11th and the meeting was on the 14th?
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you. So what is the notification process that the entity should have received for a budget change? So the, the budget was approved on August 31st. What would the process be to change the budget?
So Commissioner Samuelson, the, the process is, is we normally go through our legal services that we, we have. And we ask them if, if there's anything that we need to do in order for us to be in compliance, be transparent and to, to do the best job that we can as HCAD Board of Directors. So just out of, out of being transparent, we just wanted to notify all the entities, not just the county, the city and the school district. We, all the entities that we represent, that we collect on, we notified them of this, of this, of these three committed funds.
Okay. And so do you believe that that notification process conformed with 606C?
I can't speak to that. That's a legal matter that would be addressed by your county attorney, whether we met those guidelines or not. And according to our attorney, we, we met all the requirements pertaining to these three line items.
Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, and as you confirm, or as Mr. Sutton confirmed, that these are funds that were in 2023 that are now available in 2024. They'll be available to be spent in 2024. So in definition, that equates to a budget amendment because there are now more funds available in 2024 than what was approved in August, on August 31st at the budget. So let me read what the statute says in 606C. "The board may amend the approved budget at any time, but the secretary of the board must deliver a written copy of the proposed amendment to the presiding officer of the governing body of each taxing unit participating in the district, not later than 30 days before the date that the board acts on it." So this is, whether or not these funds are going to be needed. I mean, there's already $110,000 in contingency. I agree with Mr., well, Commissioner Andrews that, you know, that the restrooms didn't get bad overnight. So we knew that they weren't ADA compliant in the summer when the budget was being created. I would have anticipated that you knew by July or August that there was going to be more litigation based on the number of protests that there were. So I agree with Commissioner Andrews that these things could have been handled during the budget or that the 110,000 that's already in contingency may cover that. So also in 6.10, as I understand it, it states that the taxing units can disapprove any action that the board takes. If the governing bodies of a majority of the taxing units entitled to vote on the appointment of board members, adopt resolutions disapproving an action other than adoption of the budget by the appraisal district board of directors and file them with the secretary of the board within 15 days after the action is taken, the action is revoked effective the day after the day on which the required number of resolutions is filed. So in my opinion, the actions taken to make these excess uncommitted funds from 2023 available in 2024 fiscal year is a material change to the budget and constitutes a budget amendment. And the board is obligated to follow the tax code on the notification of the entities, which should have occurred 30 days prior to the meeting on the 14th. As you are aware, the, the HCAD board wasn't not transparent in the past, the prior board, the previous board. And there was, they created a Texas nonprofit corporation to facilitate a real estate deal to purchase land from the ISD and build a new building that HCAD would then lease back. The district approved a resolution that was never shared or approved by the taxing entities to approve this corporation and upon its formation to carry out a loan in the maximum principal amount, not to exceed $3.5 million. This corporation would not answer to the taxing entities, but to the board. The previous board moved over $2 million into a fund, building fund to facilitate purchase of land and construction of the building. Spent almost $400,000 on architects and surveys in preparation for construction. Retained government capital corporation as the lender retained Naaman, Howell, Smith and Lee to serve as special counsel in connection with the proposed financing, obtaining land and construction of the building. The $400,000 didn't cover lawyer fees. That was just for the surveys and the engineering and architect. So I would venture to guess, once you include the attorney fees, it'd be closer to half a million. This was money that should have been returned to the taxing entities to offset future assessments. And remember, none of these actions were ever presented to the taxing entities or approved by the taxing entities. So all the while, the HCAD board and the former chief appraiser were spending hours upon hours on setting up this nonprofit corporation, looking for architects, surveyors, engineers, finance corporations and lawyers, scoping out possible land to be traded at the IS, with the ISD. They were neglecting the need for improved software to maintain, to make the appraiser's job more efficient, which would reduce the overall expenses for the district. And that was pointed out by our interim chief appraiser, Mr. Petry. He pointed that out, that, that our, that the software that our current HCAD was using was lacking. So now we have a new chief appraiser. And the first thing on the agenda would be to establish credibility and transparency. You do this by following the tax code to the T. Proper notification and following the budget amendment process. Looking over the prior budgets, the 2024 budget is 23% higher than the 2022 budget, 37% higher than the 21 budget. And remember, those years had several thousand dollars set aside for the building fund. Looking at the budget to actual comparison, and thank you appraisal district Meg and Mr. Law for sending the budget to actual report to me the other day when I asked. The 2023 budget would come in about $500,000 less than the budget for a final actual of 2.4. So the 2024 budget is already approximately $400,000 over the 2023 actual. The 2024 budget already includes, as I stated, $110,000 in contingency. That is a total of $510,000, either increased from 2020, 2023 actual or in contingency. That seems like more than enough to cover what you were asking for, which is $120,000. There is a proper way to do this and the district needs to follow the process. The district may find that $500,000 over last year's actual is not enough to cover the expenses. As I mentioned to you at your board meeting and in email, a monthly budget to actual comparison sent to the taxing entities with a narrative would be a great way to communicate the, and proactively notify the entities if you forecast certain budget lines running low. Then when you do come forward with a budget amendment for approval, there would be no surprises. And we would be well informed because we would have been tracking it every month when you send your budget to actual comparison. This is a normal process and a good business practice that most companies do on a monthly basis. Any of you that have worked in business know that budget to actual forecast is just a normal thing that you do every month. So yes, Mr. Law did send us notice. However, it was not in the proper timeframe and also misstated when the meeting was. It is time for the board and the chief appraiser to improve communication and transparency and most importantly, credibility. As I stated earlier, making more funds available in 2024 than what was approved in the 2024 budget is a budget amendment and must follow the process. And as per the attorney general's opinion, the GA 1040, taxing units may utilize section 6.10 of the tax code to disapprove the amendment of a budget by an appraisal district board. So that's, I mean, I can read the resolution if y'all are ready to do that or if anyone else has any comments, questions.
Mr. Andrews, any other comments?
Yeah. Gosh, I just, you know, I, I'm conflicted with this. I appreciate the work that you, you board members have put in on this. I very much do. And, and I want you to know that this is not always, you know, 100% one way or the other. A lot of times you're sitting right here at the precipice trying to make these decisions. If you came back with this, hey, we need this $20,000 for the upgrades to the technology or whatever, we need a budget amendment and all that. I would have no problem with that, something that's moving forward that you anticipated, the expenditures. But with, with your, your current contingency and everything else. I think that it's, I've always stood on the principle up here that the taxpayer needs their money in their pocket as much as they can and, and let the government restrain to its current needs. So on that principle and because of that, you know, I would be opposed to allowing the, the shift in the excess funds.
I'm aware I'm at on this.
Okay. And you've had your time, sir.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any clarification for your, your statement?
I'm, I read, watched the meeting and I've done a lot of research, so.
Can I make one last comment, Mr. Andrews?
I think, yeah, that, that should be fair here.
And, and all due respect, you know, the board of directors at the HCAD appraisal district is doing the best ability that they can possibly do under the circumstances that we have been put in by the previous leadership and previous board. The board is being proactive. You know, some of these processes takes time over years to right the ship, so to speak. We, you don't know what you have until you lose it. When it came to losing our own chief appraiser, we didn't know what we didn't, what a good chief appraiser looks like. Okay? So we went through that process of an interim chief appraiser, which had 40-plus years of experience. We knew what a chief appraiser in comparison to a five-year chief appraiser looked like. And then from that point, we know what another good chief appraiser looks like. So it's all about the leadership and the leadership that is directing the ship. I think we have a, a good leadership. We have a good board. And with the new board members, it's going to be even better. And, and we're making micro steps to it. You know, with the new chief appraiser, he came out with a news quarterly report to provide to all the taxing entities. It, it should be coming out every quarter. He's also made himself available for explaining things like an intergovernmental meeting. He's invited the, all the taxing entities to come to those type of meetings. So, and then he's, he's sending these notifications to all these taxing entities. Right now, it may not appear that we're being transparent because that process is just rolling out. But as, as the years come, you'll see additional newsletters coming out, additional training opportunities and also more meetings by the chief appraiser to make it transparent that any of the elected officials or any of the taxing entities want to have a one-on-one with the chief appraiser. He's made himself available with these meetings. With that said, I thank you for your consideration. I'm not a lawyer, so I, I, I rely on our, our county attorney, I mean, Hood Central Appraisal District attorneys. And, and in my opinion, and, and also in their opinion, that we follow everything that's pertaining to the tax code. I don't know if your county attorney has the opportunity to review this and, and see if we are. But we're, we're making our decisions based on our county, our central appraisal district attorney's advice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Matt has, I don't know, Matt, do you want to say anything? And while he's walking up here.
Can I say something first?
Sure, sure.
Please?
I mean, you're the.
Well, I, I, you know, I was, I was waiting till the end. Wait a minute, Mr. Mills. First of all, there's a lot of things to unpack here. And so I'm going to be, I'll apologize upfront that this may be a little back and forth. But I'll start with this. We judge ourselves by our intentions, but others judge us by our actions. And I've attended, I attended the HCAD meeting on November the 14th, as some of the members here know. And I've been attending several meetings over the last several months. And one of the comments that I made actually the other night went to transparency because a big part of the theme of what I've got to say today stays with transparency. And the agenda that was put out there, one of them was to consider board, board of directors' policy. There's no policy attached. One of them was to consider invoices for the never-ending billing that's not going to get built with no documents attached. Some line item back and forth. And then consider this issue here about committing this money to certain funds. First of all, going back a little bit, I want to address Mr. Rodriguez's fine inventory of what the county does as far as all the different departments that move money from point A to point B. And he quoted us several departments. Every one of those departments have to come to the commissioner's court and have it approved. Every one of them. Because they don't get to act on their own. Because, because we are the elected officials that have to answer to the budgets. So that's point number one. And I will point out that I let you go, I gave you the courtesy to let you speak. Something I don't get when I come up to your room, but that's another topic. I've heard a lot of, we've done everything as honestly and as prudently as possible. And I appreciate that. And I'm not disparaging any individual members with that comment. If I was on that board, I would be in here saying I did it correctly too. But our appraisal district over the last several years, especially the last 12 months, and this is nothing to do with the board itself necessarily, but with the issue with our former chief appraiser, that it seemed, appears that nobody, nobody had a clue of what was going on with him. I don't think that's true. My understanding is a lot of people had a clue what was going on with him for months. And then we had an interim, Mr. Petry come in here, or Petry, I think. I always call him Rob Petry from the Dick Van Dyke Show. But anyway, he was in here and I spoke about these issues one-on-one with him on more than one occasion. So, and like I said, I'm probably going to be a little disjointed here, but let's talk about litigation. Why, why is the litigation so high this year? And why has it been high the last couple of years, higher than you would expect? Well, maybe there's some problems within the appraisal district. Maybe there's some, maybe there's some problems with the appraisers. I myself have a case in district court right now. And I can't wait to take some depositions. But that's an aside. The other day I went up to the city council because they had this agenda item to. The other day, I went up to the city council because they had this agenda item to disapprove this resolution, not for the amount, 120,000, 105, whatever the amount is. That's not really the issue necessarily. The issue is, I think Commissioner Samuelson talked about it, and it's just not, it's just not according to statute. It's that simple. What's so hard about bringing it up here? And I went up to the city council, and apparently I offend people when I go, I guess I'm supposed to check my First Amendment rights at the door when I walk into city council. But I went up there to speak against this, or to speak in favor of not approving this transfer, not because of the amount again, and because of what your intentions are, I agree with you, actually. It's the way it was done. And I would submit that maybe we ought to consider some heightened crossing Ts and dotting Is up there at this time rather than business as usual. And I got a really big feeling of business as usual when I went up there the other day. And I didn't feel very comfortable with that, but I want to make sure that people understand this. The HCAD board of directors are appointed by the taxing entities. They are unelected bureaucrats that are put on a board that answer to the taxing entities. And if we don't keep an eye on them, and I'm not saying anything about the board right now, I'm just saying, let's go look at Tarrick County. Had a lot of problems over there. I feel like that we need to have board members that are willing to let us know what's going on more. This was something that, I was actually quite surprised it was going on the other night, that they took funds, money from '23 to commit to '24 after all the turmoil has been going on. And it wouldn't have been difficult to just do, just go by the statute. In my opinion, I represent the taxpayers of this county, and I try to make sure that I do the best I can. Here's my intention, to get the board members on there that are going to be transparent and that are going to be fair and balanced with all the taxing entities. Right now, the way the new board sits, we have four board members, there's five total. Right now, in my opinion, we have four board members that are going to be, basically do whatever the GISD tells them. Now, I hope they prove me wrong, but I've seen Facebook posts by some of them on this last bond issue, which I don't think somebody ought to be taking a public position on a situation like that if they're sitting on the board. But whatever the case, my objection is to the process. Oh, that's enough. That's all I got, thanks.
I do want to say this. Mr. Rodriguez, I appreciate you reaching out, and I don't think there's anything intentionally non-transparent here, and I think that you actually made an effort to ensure that transparency. Now, whether the notice was correct, it was a little short notice to kind of delve into this particular issue. So I don't, I don't want to cast any aspersions on anybody trying to not be transparent. I don't think that that was in any way, as a matter of fact, I appreciate very much you reaching out ahead of time and kind of, you know, going over this with me. I just wanted to make that aside.
And let's just, you know, add on to that. I don't, it doesn't feel like there was a reason why the notice couldn't have been 30 days. It's not like you need the money now. So if you were to, if this resolution were to be rejected by all the taxing entities, you could still follow the process and notify the taxing entities 30 days ahead, and you would still be able, you know, if approved, the funds would still be there, what, end of January? So I'm not sure that there was a rush to do this that was a reason to bypass the 30-day notification and follow the actual statute and the process. So I just want to make sure that there's, you know, Mr. Sutton, Mr. Frye, Mr. Rodriguez, this is not any, I guess, disparaging the work that you're doing. It's volunteer work, and you guys are doing a great job on being volunteers and doing your service to the community, so I want to thank you for that. This is just about following the process and doing what's right for the taxpayers. So anyone else, or should I?
If no one else has a comment, do I hear any kind of motion?
Yes. As I read this resolution, because there were some updates on the amount of money and a couple of changes I'm going to note, the, do you have the resolution? Is Owen over there, or? Or I just wanted it to show on the screen if Owen or Drew are over there, could put the resolution up as I read through it, because it's much easier to follow than just to, for someone to read it to you. So there it is.
There it is.
Thank you. Okay, so I make the motion that the commissioner's court, Hood County Commissioner's Court, adopt the resolution to reject the Hood County appraisal district resolution to create three new committed fund accounts, whereas on August 31st, 2023, the Hood Central Appraisal District, HCAD, adopted a 2024 budget approved by the taxing entities, and whereas the HCAD adopted budget did not include line items for committed funds designated for future unknown expenses. Whereas Texas Tax Code 606J, which governs appraisal districts, states, "If the total amount of payments made or due to be made by taxing units participating in appraisal district exceeds the amount actually spent or obligated to be spent during the fiscal year for which the payments were made, the chief appraiser shall credit the excess amount against each taxing unit's allocated payments for the following year in proportion to the amount of each unit's budget allocation for the fiscal year for which the payments were made. If the taxing unit that paid its allocation amount is not allocated, a portion of the district's budget for the following fiscal year, the chief appraiser shall refund to the taxing unit its proportionate share of the excess funds not later than the 150th day after the end of the fiscal year for which the payments were made." And whereas Texas Tax Code 606J does not provide for appraisal districts to create or maintain fund balance or committed funds with excess budget funds. And whereas on December 14th, 2023, HCAD approved a resolution to create three new committed fund accounts, namely building, repair, and maintenance, technology, and litigation. And whereas these committed funds account, these committed fund accounts would be created by transferring $120,000 of excess 2023 budget funds to be used in the 2024 fiscal year. And whereas, the addition of these committed funds account, these fund accounts equates to a budget amendment, that word is being changed. Whereas, adding this line in, whereas Tax Code 606C requires notification to the taxing units not later than 30 days before board action. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Hood County Commissioner's Court does hereby reject and disapprove the HCAD resolution approved on, or in the December 14th, 2023, HCAD board meeting to create three committed fund accounts, namely building, repair, and maintenance, technology, and legal, in the aggregate amount of $120,000. Be it further resolved that the Hood County Commissioner's Court calls on the HCAD to return all 2023 excess budget funds proportionately to the taxing entities in compliance with Tax Code 606J, adopted this 22nd day of December, 2023, by the Hood County Commissioner's That's the motion.
So we have a motion on the table to approve a resolution as read into the record to disapprove the fund changes that the HCAD did on November 14th. Do I hear, December 14th? Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other comments? All in favor of signing off on this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All who disapprove, nay. Okay, so the resolution passes, disapproving the fund changes. How many negatives was that?
Four.
All right. Next item, item number six, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the sheriff's office to purchase a scheduling software. Choices between End Time Safe Cities, SNAP Schedule, approved quote may require judge's signature, and the judge is not here. But go ahead.
Court, so in front of you is three options for a scheduling software for Dispatch, Jail, and the deputies. Currently, right now, it is my understanding that it is very difficult to track time for the three of them, those three departments, to my understanding. And so I have met with Sean, he's right here from Dispatch, who, again, went through these three choices to answer any questions really about this. We're just here to help support from an IT technical standpoint, but he would know more about those, the specifics on why they need this.
So currently, we use eSchedule, and there's some issues with it. It was a brand-new startup company we went with, sorry, that we went with. There's certain reports that they can't do. They were supposed to give us a mobile app so all our guys could check their schedules while they're at home and respond back to. The one we're leaning towards is End Time. We've been looking at them for like three or four months, going back and forth. Then we had all the heads of patrol, jail, and dispatch go through with them, and that's the one we would like to do is End Time.
So will there be an offset from the software that you're currently using that you won't be using anymore?
Right, yeah. So that one is done in March, so we'd like to get it approved now because they have to move all the people over from eSchedule into End Time so they can build it up, because the whole scheduling system, it's just, it's hard to do. So they'll get us set up, so in March, we'll go from e-schedule to End Time.
Okay, so what's the budget impact? If we, if e-schedule was already baked into the 2024 budget, and now we're switching that out for a new software, is it going to be?
It's going to be a little bit more. I can't remember the cost, the cost, it's like, the e-schedule's in the budget, and then I didn't do the math to see what the End Time was. I think it's going to be a little bit more, but it's not like crazy, because it's yearly.
Okay, so when I read this, I was thinking this was new, all new, like what?
No, no, so, so e-schedule, the e-schedule isn't, wasn't a contract, so we did it ourselves. So it just came out of our budget. So this one may require a judge's signature, that's why it's in front of you guys.
So was there money in the 2023-24 budget that was planned for e-schedule?
Yes.
Okay, and that's going to go away because you're going to cancel that contract?
Well, it's not.
Or just not renew it?
Right, just, yeah, we're just not going to keep going with them. Unless we don't get this, and we'll keep with them. It just, the e-scheduling's just not working like it's supposed to.
Okay, so the impact is not the total of what is in the contract that you're presenting?
Right.
That's not the budget impact?
Right.
Because there's some offset?
Yes.
And you got a, this End Time's first year fees is $13,540, and then the annual fees after that is for $8,640 a year?
Yes, sir.
For how long?
Until we go to something new, with the commissioners decide we're going to.
I mean, that's a perpetual, I mean, it's.
Yes.
As long as you keep subscribing, you keep paying.
Yeah.
Except for the one-time fee.
Right, yeah, the $13,000 is the setup fee, because they have to take everybody from the old system into the new system, so they have to import everything over. And that goes, like, people who already request a time off in the next year, they'll build that all into the schedule. Yeah, it's, it's actually kind of crazy.
What do you, what do you think, Commissioner?
I think, have you looked at, you know, which one applies, you know, the best benefit to the department as a whole, plus, you know, the cost line? And is this going to be in addition to when we do the remodel of the, you know, Dispatch Center with all the new, you know, tables and everything? Is there going to be a problem there?
Oh, no, so End Time is computer, it's software. You can, you can use it on your phone.
Okay, I'm just making sure there's not, you know, because, you know, we're fixing to do a total, you know, rebuild of the Dispatch Center, and, you know, we don't want any heat cups, you know, anything added because of that.
No, that has nothing to do with this. And so we, we knew we were looking at new software back when the budget started, so we put that onto our spreadsheet. We have e-schedule, but we're looking at different scheduling. We've gone through like 20 different meetings with other companies, and we narrowed it down to these three, but we're going, we want to go with End Time. Like, we've been looking at this for a couple of months now, making sure it was the right one.
So you don't, you don't know what the yearly fee is for the current, that you're using?
No, I don't, off the top of my head.
So we don't know what the net impact is? It's, we, End Time is the one you want, and it's the less, least expensive of the three options, but we're not sure what the budget impact is. It's somewhere south of $13,000.
So out of the three, End Time, of course, will be more upfront, but it is cheaper yearly or annually than the other two options.
And can we go forward without the judge's signature, or should we?
Well, he can sign it when he gets back, I would think.
Yeah, I don't know if he has to sign this contract, I don't know if it's a contract or not. I just brought it to you guys so we could move forward, so if you guys say yes, then I'll get the contract, and he can sign it. I'm just, you know, this whole transparency thing, I want to make sure that you guys are good with it before we go forward any farther.
Yeah, I like that.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so number six, so do I hear a motion?
Does I move that we allow the sheriff's office to purchase a scheduling software, you know, using the End Time with the approved quote that was provided in the backup?
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Andrews, to allow the sheriff's office to purchase a scheduling software, End Time, and the quote, if needed, can be, we can approve the county judge's signature today. Is that, is that right? Is that kind of it? All right, all in favor?
I have one more question.
Okay, we have other comments.
What fund is this going to come out of?
It's going to be out of mine, out of Contract Services.
Okay.
To be taken out of Contract Services with IT.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All oppose, no. I don't oppose, yes. So four, four in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Court.
Okay, let's get to the consent agenda. We have a few items on the consent agenda. Does any commissioner want to take something off the consent agenda?
No, sir.
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we present the consent agenda, or approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Andrews, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All oppose, say no. No opposition, four, passes four oh. Okay, road operations, there's nothing. So now we get to Mr. Clint Head with five beaming ears, and with development, go ahead, Mr. Head.
We accepted an application for the replata Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 76 through 79 in Precinct One. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for January 23rd, 2024.
Any comments?
No, I'll move that we set the public hearing for the replata Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 76 through 79, for January 23rd, 2024.
Second. So we have a motion to set a hearing for replata Blue Branch. Second. So we have a motion to set a hearing for replata Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 76 through 79, by Commissioner Andrews, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All oppose, no. No opposition, passes four oh. Okay. We have two public hearings coming up to discuss some replat issues. So I'm now at 10:31. We will adjourn into a public hearing, and we will hear items B and C. Go ahead, Mr. Head.
Both of these replats are combining lots to make one larger lot, so they're improving the density. The first one is Comanche Cove, Section C, Lot 12R, Block 2. Three plats done to combine 12, lots 12, 13, and 41 of Block 2, creating a 0.49 of an acre lot called 12R. It's in the Road Corridor District, served by Public Water and Onsite Sewerage Facilities. The second one's Bay Cordova Ranch, Phase 2, Lot 6R, Block 8, in Precinct 3. It's being done to combine Lots 6 and 7 of Block 8 to create a 1.011 acre lot called Lot 6R. It's in the Rural District in Precinct 3 and served by Water and Onsite Sewerage Facilities. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. We are in public hearing. Does anyone here have any comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Do we need to, do we need to do them separate?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I would say yes. So item B, could I hear a motion?
I make the motion to approve the replata of Comanche Peak, no, Comanche Peak, sorry. I make a motion to consider the replata of Comanche Cove, Section C, Lot 12R, Block 1.
Second.
A motion's been made to approve the replata of Comanche Cove, Section C, Lot 12R, Block 1, by Commissioner Samuelson, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All oppose, no. Being no, there's no no's, so passes four oh. Okay. Do I hear a motion on item two, C?
Yeah, I move that we approve the replata of Bay Cordova Ranch, Phase 2, Lot 6R, Block 8.
Second, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. So we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve the replata of Bay Cordova Ranch, Phase 2, Lot 6R, Block 8, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All oppose, no.
Thank you.
No no's. Thank you, sir. Now, we are at financial. Number one, consider payment
The Auditor's Office has reviewed these monthly, oh, reviewed these invoices for this court and recommends payment.
Does anyone have any questions for our auditor on paying the bills? Any motions? Somebody want to make a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We pay the bills at $1,354,023 and 89 cents.
Second.
Motion's been made, Commissioner Andrews, to pay the bills, seconded by Commissioner Wilson, in an amount of $1,354,023 and 89 cents. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All oppose, no. No, no opposition. No, we'll get to pay the bills one more time. All right. Item number two, consider financial reports received and reviewed by the Audit Department for the period of December 1st, 2023 through December 15th, 2023, and take appropriate action under the local government code cited provisions. We have two speakers. Mr. Harold Granik.
Of 23 departments, one did not submit a financial statement. I feel it's the obligation of that department, the county clerk, to be more timely. Other than that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Second speaker is Ms. Katie Lang.
Good morning, Judge Protemin Commissioners. As I stated in previous Commissioner Courts, Tyler is having a problem with my reports and trying to fix it on their end. Tyler, I have an email here from Kristen in the Auditor's Department. Tyler is still working out a few kinks in your report. Your report has a lot more fee codes than others do. There's another email from Becky Kidd. Good morning. Kristen spoke with Tyler last Wednesday morning. Tyler indicated that they were working on it. Kristen did thoroughly explain how important this, this issue is. So I have been trying to submit my reports. They're just not working in the Tyler software, which I want to point out that the county judge, Commissioner Wilson, and I believe it was Ron Cotton, approved this software that they pushed on the whole county. I, I did get trained and do the conversion and go along with it, and my office is very well-versed with it. But it seems that the county judge refuses to use the software that he pushed on everybody else. He pushed it so the entire county can you, can better communicate between the departments. We weren't having any problems communicating, but beside the fact, the judge has his office print out his orders for his signature. This software has an option for electronic soft, electronic signature. If he uses this option, it would automatically be put into a folder and sent directly to the county clerk's office electronically. Instead, his office has to print out the orders, leave them on his desk, wait for him to assign them, and then print them, and then scan them back into the system, and send them to me by an email. So my office receives his orders signed manually by an email. Then we have to take this email and put them into the Tyler system. So he's making more work on his office, on my office, and this is something that he put on us. So just wanted to state that about Tyler. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, Ms. Matlock, do you recommend, or tell us what you think?
So I know that Kristen has been working with Katie, and I think they've.
I can't hear you. Can you hear me? So Katie, I think that we have figured out how
to pull those reports, and Kristen would be happy to come by and help you. I, I think it was just yesterday that we got it all worked out. So if you would like for her to come over, or myself, we would be happy to do that. But it, it has been an enduring process for her office specifically with these fee codes.
Thank you. That'd be wonderful. So I'll get with you after court.
Okay. Sounds good. Other than that, the Auditor's Office has reviewed these monthly reports and asked if the court accepts them.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the reports as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Andrews to approve the Audit Department's financial reports, recommendation to approve them, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All oppose, say no. Being no no's, it passes four oh, and we are adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everybody.